I'd like to call the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government Committee to order. My name is Jake Olivera, and I am the Chair of the Municipalities Committee on the Senate side, and I'm so pleased today to be joined by my friend and colleague from Northampton, from the western part of the state, who's filling in for Chairwoman Carol Fiola, State Representative Lindsey Sabadosa. Thank you, and welcome to helping to run a meeting.[41.23][41.23](Laughter). With that, I'll turn it over to my Vice Chair to introduce the House members of the committee that are present.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I would like to recognize the House members. We have Rep. Phillips, Rep. Scarsdale, Rep. Shand, and I believe that's it for right now, though we may have others joining us virtually.
Great. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd now like to start, before we go into testimony, going over a few logistics before we start the committee hearing. We are operating in a hybrid model, like all of our committee hearings now, but unfortunately, the monitors in front of us and on the side of us are not working, so the only screen that actually is working is right behind the rostrum here. So if you can fix your attention for committee members, you might be straining your necks to see people that are testifying virtually, but they are behind us, and we will be able to hear them. I'd also like to remind those that are testifying virtually to make sure that you mute your Teams app when you are not testifying. When you are testifying, please unmute. We'll give you a couple of seconds with the transition. Please keep in mind that testimony today is limited to three minutes. We will be taking legislators out of order, and if they have panels, we'll make sure to include them as well. I know Representative Shand has someone that's going to be testifying, so we'll give you a few minutes to walk on the other side to give your testimony. If you're not able to be heard today, and if our technology fails at some point, please send in your written testimony. We will be taking in written testimony until Tuesday, October 24th, at 5:00 p.m. You may submit your testimony to themunicipalitiescommittee@gmail.com, and please address your comments to the co-chairs of this committee. As I mentioned before, legislators will go out of turn, and if any members do have any questions at some point, feel free to get my attention or Vice Chair Sabadosa's attention to be recognized. With that, I am going to go through the list of legislators first who have signed up to testify, and we are so pleased to have State Representative Maschino from Hull joining us to testify on a bill, House Bill 4037.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here today as a home rule petition, an act relative to certain parcels of land in the town of Cohasset, and my Cohasset Town Manager, Chris Senior, should be online with two of his staff members to both testify and to answer questions. He'll explain to you that this arose as a town meeting warrant article that was approved by town meeting last, their most recent town meeting in May. It is a public safety issue that he'll explain to you around cellphone reception. The reason I came in today was because this particular article involves Article 97 land, so what they're proposing to do is responsive to their public safety need for better cellphone reception, they're proposing to swap out two parcels of Article 97 land. And I'll let him talk to you about the details. This really, it's very practical, it makes sense, but it is the first time that we have to do new regulations that were promulgated and are responsive to EEA, and because it's Article 97, the town had to go through the process to actually not just swap out one for the other, but they're giving up Article 97 letter, so they had to put another parcel of equal value into Articles 97. We have done that. He will tell you all the details. I will not presume to explain it, but I wanted to make sure you knew that we are liaising with EEA, and we have gotten their preliminary approval to file the bill and to move forward. And I think we probably shared the email with your excellent staff, and if there's anything more that the committee needs us to do, you know, just let us know. We have requested a more express approval process. I'm not sure they have approval process yet, but we did get that initial authorization that said we could do this. So I just wanted to make sure that I came in myself to explain that, and then if you -- I'll be happy to stay if you want to take the town manager to answer any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions by members of the committee? Seeing that there are none so far, I'm going to turn it over to your panel if you want to stick around.
That'll be great. I will.
Right now, so we have from the town of Cohasset, I believe, on is Michelle Leary, Ron Maynard, William Quigley, and John Dockery.
And Chris Senior.
And Chris Senior.
Unfortunately, Chris isn't available right now. He had an incident that he had to attend to, but the rest of us are here.
Great.
Feel free to start your testimony.
Well, thank you very much for bringing us in and allowing us to speak on this very important topic. The town of Cohasset has been wrestling with critically poor cellular signals for multiple years. We've had multiple studies done over the period of time. It's been identified throughout numerous regions along the coast that there's absolutely no cell signal whatsoever. This has presented a public safety issue and has had poor results while 911 was trying to be called for emergency situations. I'll allow the police and fire chief to speak more directly about the incidents potentially that had occurred in the past that brought us to this point, but we have done a fair amount of diligence with regards to identifying a suitable solution, as well as mitigation parcels that we want to utilize as part of this Chapter 97 article. I will say that we have done and invested in the town of Cohasset's 911 systems through stopgap measures, including call boxes, both satellite and wired, at numerous locations, but those are just not sufficient enough to cover the vast area that is plagued with this issue. With that, I'd like to either ask for any questions, or I'll turn it over to the police and fire chief.
Feel free to turn it over to the police and fire chief, and we'll ask any questions after you're done testifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is William Quigley. I'm the police chief in Cohasset, and thank you for having us today. To reiterate what Ron said, we have a large swath of land that sits between Hall and Cohasset with absolutely zero cell service. This is not hyperbole. We've had medical emergencies at a beach in this area, and people are unable to contact 911. They have to, you know, run maybe a quarter mile down the road and try to bang on doors and get someone with the landline. This has happened numerous times over the last three years, and it's posing a significant public safety issue, and we fully support, you know, rectifying this situation, and we hope that you'll approve this transfer of land.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Dockery, and I'm the fire chief of the town of Cohasset. Again, thank you for having us this morning. One of the other issues, too, is we have major noristas. This part of town loses power, so drops out of communication with individuals in emergencies, and the cell coverage doesn't meet the getting in touch with us. So this tower would help that cell coverage, especially when there's a loss of power in that area, to notify us in case of emergencies. Again, thank you for hearing our testimony.
Great. Thank you, chiefs, and thank you for testifying. Are there any questions from committee members? I will say, we have been joined by State Representative Brian Hamilton from Methuen. Thanks for joining us, Representative. Madam Vice Chair.
You have a question, yes, either for Rep. Maschino or for anyone on the panel. I was wondering if the construction of the cellular tower is going to interfere with the usage of the park.
The quick answer to that is no. I'll leave it to the chiefs to describe it, but it's a very narrow piece of land. It's not actually fully utilized. This did go through town meeting, was approved unanimously, so there shouldn't be any opposition by neighbors, and I think we provided the certified copy already to the committee. I think everyone understands that this, they're tired of losing coverage, they're worried about being able to call 911. This has always been a space where it's been spotty, and now it's just nonexistent, which has really been problematic. So I think everybody is on board. The town of Cohasset actually has taken many strides over the years. They have a wonderful land conservation trust. They've put a tremendous amount of land, Wampatuck State Park is part of here, Wheeler Park, they have a lot of walking trails. This is really sort of tucked off to the side. It's just not contributing to the larger piece, so in my mind, it's a win from the public safety perspective, but it's also a win from the environmental perspective because we'll be capturing and bringing a different piece of parcel into it where it might be better utilized. But I defer to Ron to add to that.
Yes, absolutely. If you compare the two parcels, the Wheelwright parcel, which is being utilized, approximately two acres of land for the cell tower, in conjunction or contrast to that is a property we refer to as the Esposito property. That is over six acres of land, similar in scope with regards to the topology and use, so it fits very well with mitigating any public park designation that the Wheelwright might have removed within those two acres. It's a win for the town. It's $115,000, I believe, assessed value for the Esposito property, as opposed to approximately $20,000 for the two acres of the Wheelwright.
Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members? Seeing that there's none, thank you, Representative, and thank you from our friends on the South Shore for joining us today.
We appreciate it. We look forward to working with the committee staff to finalize this. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Next, we have Representative--
I apologize for the interruption. I just got a text from Boston City Councilor Sharon Durkin. She's trying to get online. Needs a connection. She says she doesn't have it. I received--
We received an email on that? Okay. All right. Thank you. No, no, no. Thanks for clarifying. No. Next, we have State Representative Brian Murray from Milford, who's testifying on House Bill 2090. Representative Murray.
Mr. Chairman, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, committee members. Thank you for taking me out of order. I'm here to testify on Bill H-2090. This is an act to improve parking and pedestrian safety, and as I think the committee knows, there's also two other identical bills, H-2106, which is filed by Chairman Roy, and H-3603, which has been filed by Rep. Vanna Howard. Obviously, we should have coordinated our efforts better.[774.01][774.01](Laughter). But I think this is an important bill, and I just want to take a little bit of time to try to explain it. Basically, it calls for, when you have a situation, you have municipal on-street angle or perpendicular parking adjacent to a commercial building, it's going to require safety appurtenances to be constructed, and that brings to mind the ballads that we see. It defines commercial building, which I think is important in terms of construction, reconstruction, or substantial rehab, which costs in excess of $1 million. That would trigger the requirement. Any requirement that has to be built has to be in accordance with local zoning bylaws. The bill also looks to establish a commission, a pedestrian safety design advisory group to investigate best practices going forward, because there are obviously a multitude of different designs and buildings that we have that are subjected to this kind of thing. You know, the idea is a clear one. It's to prevent vehicles from going into buildings, and I think, certainly when you just look at the news at night, it seems like every day this occurrence is happening somewhere, whether it's a convenience store, Dunkin' Donuts, whatever. I reached out to the storefront safety initiative, which was started in 2017 by the storefront safety council, and their purpose is to end vehicle into building crashes, and they provide resources to private property owners as well as municipalities towards that end. They have some interesting statistics. Nationally, they find there are at least 100 incidents every day throughout the country, resulting in 4,000 injuries annually and 2,600 deaths annually across the country. I will be submitting written testimony on this, and with that will be a list from the storefront safety initiative that shows a partial listing of incidents in Massachusetts just dating back about the last 10 years or so, and there's over 900, close to 1,000 incidents just on that alone. So I think the need is there. I think that this bill is a good common sense way to start, and I would ask for a favorable report.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing that there are none, I would also like to introduce State Representative Tom Nguyen from Andover, who has joined us here today, and I know that Representative Howard, I ran into her in the hallway, and she'll be coming down to testify as well on this in a little while, and we'll see if Chairman Roy is able to make it as well. Seeing that there's no further questions, thank you for testifying before us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to move on to some folks that have joined us virtually. State Representative Pat Hadad and her fire chief from Swansea, Eric Hadgster, have joined us. I think you're on here, Representative Hadad. Can you hear us?
I am. I can hear you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you so much for taking me out of turn, and including Chief Hader from Swansea. We're here to testify on House 4047, establishing a trust to administer a length of service program for the Swansea Fire Department. The chief can give you lots of details, but I just want to say that Swansea has the largest volunteer fire group in the state, and they also have the most land area that they cover. So we have, for many years, been able to get lots and lots of people to volunteer to be in the fire service in Swansea. Several years ago, we did a home rule petition, which allowed the town of Swansea to give a tax break on property tax to people who would serve. So this is another way to entice people to become part of the service, and also retain those who have been serving for quite a long time, and also give them a reward for hanging with it and doing all the things that they do. So let me turn it over to the chief, so he can talk much more about his department.
Great. Thank you, Representative. Chief, you're up next.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for having me today, and thank you to Representative Hadad for championing our efforts as she always does. Very much appreciated. As you are well aware, the fire service today, it becomes more and more difficult for us to attract and certainly to retain. I think that's especially important here with the volunteer fire department. Our staff, as the representative had alluded to, was entirely volunteer. We are certainly proud of that, but we certainly have our struggles, and over the years, it's become more and more difficult to attract and retain those firefighters. This particular program that we have put forward is another step to that end. We had some success with improving our recruitment and retention through the tax incentive program that we had put in place about 11 years ago now. This would be the second program that would allow us to be able to support our volunteers, hopefully attract new volunteers, and certainly reward those longstanding volunteers for their time of service. It is vitally important to us to be able to continue that. We have, we take great pride, certainly, in our volunteer fire department. The history, the heritage that we have, we want to see that continue, as it would become a significant burden on the community, should we not be able to do so and had to turn to a career fire department. We're hoping that this program will pay dividends to that end. We're certainly hopeful that this, in conjunction with the other programs we have, will allow us to continue our volunteer fire department. The program would be essentially a very short or small kind of rewarded pension, if you will, based on their length of service through the town. They would be receiving something after their retirement, and again, a way to entice them to stay longer in the service. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer on the program, but we certainly would appreciate your support in this, helping us to retain our members, and certainly helping us to retain the volunteer fire service in Swansea.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Before I turn it over to the committee for questions, I'd like to introduce State Representative Michelle Dubois from Brockton, who's joined us. Thank you, Representative. Now, committee members, any questions for the chief or Representative Hadad? Seeing none, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Representative, for joining us.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing that we forgot?
Absolutely.
The Board of Selectmen is on board, and so is the Advisory and Finance Committee, and this will, as is the town administrator. They may try to get in today, but I just wanted to make sure that you realize that the town is 100% behind this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you both for your testimony. Turning now to someone who is here virtually, I'd like to invite State Representative Dawn Shan to the table to testify with her from the town of Merrimack, a select board member, Chris Manny, who has joined us as well. Representative Shan, you're here to testify on H-4097.
Thank you, Chair Olivera, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Yes, I am here to testify on behalf of the town of Merrimack. Their act is 4097, an act to increase the membership of the select board of the town of Merrimack from three members to five members. So Merrimack is new to the First Essex. It is a gem of a community. The population has stayed roughly the same. It's grown about 500 people between 2010 and 2020. However, the number of registered voters has increased substantially more. Since 2006 to 2023, we think they have approximately 1,500 more voters. So the impulse behind this town warrant is a really democratic impulse. There are just so many more people who want to participate in municipal governance. Currently, Merrimack has a town administrator and a three-person select board, but it's a town that faces a complexity of decision-making and infrastructure that's, you know, that's much bigger than a town of roughly 6,700 people. The select board, I've also noticed, is responsible for the town's most treasured traditions, its Santa Parade, its old home days, so they really need to be able to share the leadership and the civic responsibilities more broadly. I'm going to let the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Chris Manny, testify and talk a little bit more about the impulse behind the bill and why it passed unanimously, and what they hope to accomplish.
Great. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair, and all committee members. Representative Shan, as always, thank you for all of your support, your unwavering commitment to the great town of Merrimack, and thank you so much for testifying in those kind words. What I would like the committee to know today about H-4097 is really, as Representative Shan said, it is a call for civic engagement, and at this point, where Merrimack is, is we are a, what I would say is, a quaint New England town, but with many opportunities for expansion and improvement. From an economic development standpoint, I think priorities have changed over the years. I think the expectation of our community and our citizens have changed, and I think with that, along with some of the other more fun activities, as Representative Shan said, as old home days and the Santa Parade and those types of activities, the expectations have been raised, and I think that's probably not just for the Merrimack Select Board. I think that's probably across many different municipalities across the state, where citizens are very engaged, they're very in tune to what is happening in their municipality, and at this point, moving from three members to five members, I think is going to better serve our community, not only engaging them directly, but also engaging with folks as yourselves, right, our elected officials in the State House, and the various departments that we have to work with on a daily basis. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just want to say once again, thank you all for your time today and consideration, and once again, thank you, Dawn, for your continued support, as always.
Thank you, Chairman Manny and Representative. Are there any questions from committee members? We'll start first with Representative Scarsdale.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this change also reflected in the town charter, or is Merrimack not governed by a town charter?
That's a great question. Chair Manny, would you like to answer?
Yeah, so this did go to town meeting, so this is our home rule petition, so then we can update our bylaws.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Absolutely.
So usually, in town charters, the membership of boards are expressly laid out, so will this home rule petition be in conflict with your charter, or is it not laid out in your charter, how, like, representation on the board, the number?
So as this home rule petition goes through, we will update our general bylaws with our legal counsel to make sure that there is no conflict with the charters.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Representative. Representative Sabadosa?
Thank you, and I think this is probably going to be a question for Chair Manny, although I'm happy to have the representative answer as well. I just wanted to clarify, because I had a note that the article passed 49 to 38 at town meeting, but then I heard you say unanimous, so I just wanted to clarify what that process looked like, and if there were multiple votes, or what occurred.
So basically, it was unanimous among the select board members. So it was 3-0 from the select board members, and I would say, across the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, everyone that is heavily involved, I think they understand what the expectations are of the town government, and they very much respected that vote. Now, at town meeting, there was healthy discussion about whether we should expand the select board from three to five, or if we should go a different avenue, maybe as a strong town manager. So that's where I think that there were maybe some conflicts about what the community was thinking, but regardless, the spirit of it is capacity and increased representation.
Thank you. It certainly wouldn't be town meeting without healthy debate, so I appreciate hearing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you, Representative. You can join us on this side again.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chairman Manny, for joining us as well.
Thank you, everybody.
Moving now to, very close to where we sit today, there is a bill that has been filed by Representative Livingstone, having to do with historic Beacon Hill districts, and we are joined virtually by City Councilor Sharon Durkin from the Boston City Council. Councilor, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, Counselor. You have three minutes to testify.
Thank you so much. Dear, thank you to the Chair and members of the committee for listening to our testimony today. I'm here to voice my support for House Bill 4076 on behalf of my constituents and lovers of history in the city of Boston. The effort to expand Beacon Hill's historic district has been a labor of love for some time now, and I'd like to quickly start by thanking engaged neighbors, the members and leaders of the Beacon Hill Civic Association, Representative Livingstone, and my predecessor, Kenzie Bach, for working so diligently to move this as a priority for so many years. Right now, along Cambridge Street, there's a 40-foot wide gap in Beacon Hill's historic district from West Cedar to Bowden Street. As a resident of the North Slope of Beacon Hill, I live so close to the edge of this boundary and cross through--
I think we lost connection with you, Counselor. Can you hear us? Counselor, are you there?
Can you guys still see me?
We can hear you now. I think we might have lost you again. Well, we'll circle back to the Counselor. Have you joined us, or you're back?
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. You're back. Please continue.
Okay. Sorry.
You cut out for about 10 seconds.
Thank you so much. So I'll just say, I'll just start back at the last sentence. As a resident of the North Slope of Beacon Hill, I live close to this boundary. There's a 40-foot gap of Beacon Hill, and it shares the same history, the same characteristics, and is understood by both our residents and visitors as being one and the same of the rest of Beacon Hill. The North Slope of Beacon Hill is currently home to the Museum of African-American History and was historically home to Boston's African-American community. Many of these structures, leaders, and icons lived in the area are currently being preserved by the historic district, and this expansion will protect these great Bostonians and considered part of their community. Expanding the historic district towards Cambridge Street to cover this edge will correctly align the district with the natural boundaries of Beacon Hill, what we all understand the historic district to truly be. It's a common sense adjustment that will make preserving our neighborhood a little bit easier and straightforward. On behalf of my District 8 constituents and my North Slope neighbors, I ask you to support House Bill 4076, and thank you for your time today.
Great. Thank you, Counselor, and I know we have some people that are here in person to testify, but before we do that, I want to introduce-- I want to introduce State Senator Ed Kennedy, the Vice Chair of this community, this committee. Thank you for joining us, Senator Kennedy.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the Counselor? Vice Chair Sabadosa?
Yes, Counselor, I was just wondering if you could tell us about the public hearing process that led to this home rule being filed.
So the home rule petition, there was a lot of community leadership on path of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. So just a little history here. In 1963, there was some concern that an expanded Historic District on the North Slope of Beacon Hill might interfere with the city of Boston's plans at the time to build a new fire station at the side of Cambridge Street. Now that, it now exists. So given that there's new development, you know, there's new development happening on MGH's campus and construction is beginning, a lot of people just felt like we should right the wrong of 1963 and get these 40 feet part of the Historic District. But there was just a history of why these 40 feet weren't included originally.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Great. Any other committee members who have questions? Seeing none, thank you, Counselor, for joining us. And we'll turn over to a few folks that have joined us in person to support this as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Have a good day. We have Nicholas Armada. Are you here, Nicholas? Do you want to come up together or do you want to testify separately? We also have Mark Kiefer, who's here as well. Mark? And we also have, is Megan O' here?
Yes.
Megan? So, and then Robert Whitney?
Yes.
All right. You guys want to testify separately or do you all want to come up?
Probably separately.
Yeah, we can do it separately. That's fine. All right. The floor is yours, Nick.
Great. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, thank you so much for having us today. A special thank you to Representative Livingstone for shepherding this petition through. My name is Nick Armada. I am the Senior Planner for the Boston Landmarks Commission, and a part of my responsibilities are managing the day-to-day activities with the Beacon Hill Historic District. And I'm here today to speak in support of the expansion of the district. For background, established in 1955 and expanded in 1958, 1963, and 1975, Beacon Hill is the oldest protected Historic District in the Commonwealth and one of the oldest national registered districts in the country. Although the buildings facing the south side of Cambridge Street are currently outside of the district, many of them are no less historic than the properties that are currently in the district. Expanding the district to encompass the entirety of the south side of Cambridge Street is essential to the safeguard the numerous historically significant structures that greatly enhance the unique sense of space in one of the nation's most culturally important neighborhoods. This extension would provide protection to several key landmarks on Cambridge Street, including the Puffers Building at 214 to 18 Cambridge Street, an integral part of the cigar rolling industry that thrived on the hill throughout the 19th century, number 228 Cambridge Street, which is an activist organizing hub for the LGBTQ community during the mid-20th century, and 310 316 Cambridge Street, emblematic of the early 20th century automobile culture and currently serves as a legacy business of Harvard Gardens, which is deeply rooted in the neighborhood's history. For background on the current boundaries, as Counselor Durkin had just mentioned, it's likely that today's boundary stopped at its current location 40 feet from the curb of Cambridge Street, so is not to impede in the construction of a new fire station currently located at 200 Cambridge today that is, fire station is there and a valued part of the community. Furthermore, it's crucial to understand that expansion of this district will not impose a ban on new construction for non-contributing sites on this side of Cambridge Street. Instead, it will facilitate the incorporation of modern designs that seamlessly blend with the distinct character of the hill. A good example of this is the Whitney Hotel at the corner of Charles and Cambridge Street. And moreover, this designation will empower the community to have an influence on the design of these buildings through both the public input process of our commission as well as the members of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission themselves, who are members of the community. Finally, safeguarding this portion of Cambridge Street will uphold and enhance the human-scale development and walkability principles that urban planners like myself consider essential for fostering a dynamic and vibrant streetscape, conditions that are difficult to replicate in today's landscape. Again, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate the work that you do for our Commonwealth, and thanks for having me speak today.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, and thank you for educating me on the cigar industry on Beacon Hill that I did not know about.
Yeah.
As you probably know, coming from Western Massachusetts, both Vice Chair Sabadosa and I have a lot of tobacco fields and a lot of the wrappers on the outside, so it's interesting that.
I'm from Agawam.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, all right. We have Western Mass in the House. We like that. Well, you stick around. Southwick's coming virtually, testifying on a home rule. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for members of the committee for Nick before we turn it over? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next, we're going to Mark Kiefer from Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, testifying on the same bill. Mark, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Mark Kiefer. I am a 32-year resident of Beacon Hill. I formerly served as President and Chairman of the Board of the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and most importantly, for our purposes today, I currently serve as the Chairman of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, the official regulatory body for the Historic Beacon Hill District, in which capacity I work very closely with Mr. Armada. And as you already heard from both Nick and Counselor Durkin, the Historic District has been expanded many times, several times, over the years, as in light of fuller knowledge, we have come to appreciate the further historic resources in the district. It's worth noting that two of the most significant historic resources now in the district that now comprise the Museum of African-American History, the Abel Smith School Building, the first public school building for black children in the United States, and the African Meeting House, the oldest excellent black church building in the country, and the birthplace of the 19th-century abolitionist movement, were not in the district when it was first created. And so I think there is certainly precedent to suggest that we have come to appreciate that there are additional resources worthy of this protection. I want to reassure you in the first instance that there's three things this legislation won't do. It won't impose additional burdens on existing property owners. The enabling legislation already provides for the grandfathering or legacy, if that's a word, of existing buildings. So they're not going to have to go back and make changes to comply with the guidelines. As Nick already stated, it won't preclude the further development of Cambridge Street and the positive economic impacts that that will bring. The enabling legislation already provides for new construction and infill buildings, as Nick said, and it certainly won't preclude or preempt the existing other regulatory processes that govern new development, most importantly zoning and licensing, which will ultimately determine if a new restaurant can be built there or how tall the buildings will be and so forth. What it will do, and I think the important benefits of this legislation will be, as Nick said, it will ensure the preservation of existing important historic resources, which we've come to appreciate are included in that 40-foot stretch now not currently in the district. It'll provide important standards for new development and renovations. We have two standards we work with, historical and architectural appropriateness, and importantly, quality of workmanship that ensures that the materials used and the methods used are of the finest quality. And importantly, finally, it will provide for a transparent, public hearing process, which will give us another opportunity to vet architectural changes in Cambridge Street with public input. And that's what we do every month at the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. And this is particularly important because, of course, this portion of Cambridge Street is an important gateway to both the community and the city. So I'd urge you to adopt this very important legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. This is less about the actual bill before us, but we are sitting on the top Beacon Hill right here. Do you do any work with the State House itself or is that completely out of it? I mean, this is just for me. I probably shouldn't ask this more of a sidebar conversation, but since we're here.
Right. There are two per se exemptions in the original legislation. One is the property of Suffolk University, which has since been sold off, and so that no longer applies. But the other is property of the Commonwealth. So believe it or not, this incredibly nationally, and I dare say globally significant historic building is technically not in the Historic District. Now, one could argue, of course, that because it is such a public building, it does enjoy a higher level of public scrutiny that has ensured its maintenance as a great historic resource over the years. But the short answer to your question is the State House is not in the district.
Great. Thank you. You'd be interested, I do have a bill before another committee dealing with the renovations and long-term planning of the State House, it's such an iconic feature here up at the State House.
Indeed.
And having traveled to 30 other state capitals and state houses across the country, obviously, this place holds a special place in my heart, but it's also kind of the center point of the city of Boston and our Commonwealth. So take a look at that when you get a chance.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from committee members? Representative Sabadosa?
I do have a quick question. So I was just looking over the text of the bill, and so it says that the language retains previously adopted exclusions, allowing changes that don't alter the design, material, color, outward appearance, right? So one of the things that we found with our Historical Commission is that sometimes homeowners in particular have found it very difficult to work within the confines of what the Historical Commission wants, but also to modernize their homes to meet the demands of climate change. And we had very significant issues with this. And so I just wonder, is there something in this that I'm not reading that will allow homeowners to make sure that their homes last into the next century as well? Or do you foresee potential conflicts arising?
That's a great question, and this issue is one that the historic preservation community generally has been grappling with over the last several years. Our experience so far suggests that this is not an unresolvable conflict, and it doesn't necessarily need to be a conflict. For example, I've been very involved with Historic New England for many years. They own 38 historic house properties throughout New England, and it's the largest and oldest regional conservation organization in the country. They did a very significant renovation of the Lyman Estate in Waltham, where they were able to reduce the energy consumption by 67%, and all of it is completely invisible and retains 100% of the historic fabric of the building. So I don't think environmental concerns, and particularly climate change and historic preservation, need to be in conflict. And it's also important to point out that preservation itself can, you could argue, is an environmental conservation measure. How many times have we seen significant renovations where an entire interior winds up in the dumpster? And our mandate has long been to preserve existing historic materials to the maximum extent possible rather than replacing them. And that in itself reduces emissions and therefore contributes positively to the fight against climate change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining us. And next, we'll go to Megan O' from the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and you're their Board Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair, and members of the committee for your time this morning. My name's Megan O'. I'm the Board Chair of the Beacon Hill Civic Association, coming after several of my neighbors and colleagues beside me. The Beacon Hill Civic Association supports the district expansion as described in H-4076, an act to enhance the Beacon Hill Historic District. The City Council picked a home rule petition, and that hearing was held on March 20, 2023, the Doc. 0516. And that petition was for a special law, an act to make certain changes in the law relative to the Historic Beacon Hill District. As you well know, the district was created in 1955 and expanded in 1963 to the current area because of, as mentioned, the plans for a new fire station, 200 Cambridge Street, which was completed in 1965. The district stops 40 feet south of Cambridge Street. A small area of the neighborhood remains outside the Historic District. The latest expansion will include the North Slope on the south side of Cambridge Street, and there are many historic, historically significant buildings and facades on that North Slope along Cambridge Street, as well as a portion of the district, which includes Otis House, which is the last freestanding home on the north side of Cambridge Street, which is the west end. The North Slope of Beacon Hill is home to the Museum of African-American History, the African Meeting House, and several sites connected to the Underground Railroad. It's also center of, the center of Boston's early black community, and continues to be home to the Vilnius Shol, which is the center of Jewish culture, and the only immigrant-era synagogue remaining in Boston. Many of the buildings along the portion of Cambridge Street that are not included in the Historic District and have been mentioned previously are no less significant than the buildings I've just mentioned to you. In addition, the importance of the architectural contributions, the Beacon Hill Civic Association has worked since 1922 to protect and enhance the quality of residential character of the buildings and life in Beacon Hill. The expansion will help the BHTA's efforts in advocating for his residents, ensuring public input through the community process, also as mentioned before. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Megan. Any questions for Megan before we turn to the next panel? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Whitney, who's a Beacon Hill resident to testify on the same bill. Robert?
Try not to be too repetitive, because they're great speakers. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members, good morning. I am Rob Whitney. I'm an attorney in practice in Boston here. I've lived on Beacon Hill since 1985. I also was an 18-year member of the Beacon Hill Civic Association Board of Directors. I was the former president and the chair right before Megan. And I'm here to support, personally support Representative Jay Livingstone's bill to enhance the Beacon Hill Historic District. As you know and you've heard, the idea is to basically move the boundary line from 40 feet up from Cambridge Street down to the Cambridge Street itself. As Nick Armada mentioned, one of the important features here is that this will protect the sort of last piece of what we colloquially refer to as Beacon Hill that got, I'd like to say inadvertently left out of the Historic District. It was, and I've actually done the sort of the history of looking at this happened, and it literally was, in order to make room for the fire station instead of sort of making up, an inset into the district, they just drew a line from one end to the other and excised it, which is an interesting way to do it, but that was what was done. And it was mentioned by Counselor Durkin, the fire station was built almost 60 years ago, and yet since then, there's been efforts on and off by the Beacon Hill Civic Association and other concerned citizens to basically correct this omission from the original Historic Edition addition for the North Slope. I live on the North Slope. I live about 100 feet up from the 40-foot strip, and I, as already been testified to, I'm very supportive of the historic features within the North Slope generally and also that still exist within the 40-foot slope. As we mentioned, there's a great history of the African-American presence on Beacon Hill, particularly in the 40-foot strip area. There are, some have been raised since that time, but there are a few structures left that go back to the 1860s, and it's very important that we have the opportunity to try to protect them. One thing I did want to mention as well, as was mentioned briefly, Mass General Hospital is busy constructing a very large project right across the street from the area we're talking about. And there has been great concern by at least residents in my neighborhood about the effect that will have on Beacon Hill, and there's a great desire to try to protect the last little sliver that is unprotected, that is not covered by the protection of the Architectural Commission, as Mark Kiefer and Nick talked about, and that we think need to be brought into it to protect those last pieces of the history of what I call the last little bit of the North Slope on that part. There is, just I want to bring your attention to one other small change in the bill, and that basically gives the authority to the commission to levy fines for violations of the Enabling Act and the Beacon Hill Architectural Guidelines. Right now, the commission does not have the specific authority, so if someone violates the act, they're unable themselves to issue a fine. What it does is this, the particular part of the bill adds that little bit in there with due, you know, with due process, of course, in a hearing and a public process by which they can actually issue fines as needed. Thank you very much, and I strongly support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I think that's the first time the timer's gone off during this hearing.
And I cut my speech there.
Are there any questions from committee members for Robert before we turn to some more legislation? Seeing none, thank you for testifying.
Thank you also very much.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Sabadosa for a few minutes as I step out for a second.
Wonderful. Well, we're going to move on to H-4079, and we should have, I believe, a panel virtually from Southwick. Doug Mogan, Chairman of the Select Board?
I am here, thank you, along with Michelle Hill and Carl Steinhardt.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. I was going to thank Senator Olivera as well. He was in our town hall a few scant weeks ago when we were brought into the Green Communities Program, but I see he stepped out momentarily, but with our thanks.
He can still hear and see you, so appreciate the thanks.
Hi, Jacob. Hi, Jake.
So, good afternoon. My name's Doug Mogan, and I'm the Chairman of the Select Board in the town of Southwick. Southwick is, as my understanding, is the last, if not amongst the last, towns in the Commonwealth to maintain a combined office of Treasurer, Collector, and Clerk. And at town meeting in May of this year, after much deliberation and discussion with the Treasurer, Collector, Clerk, and the Select Board and the Finance Committee, an article was presented in town meeting to request was presented in town meeting to request special legislation to split the combined office that had come into being by a special legislative act in 1971, Chapter 331. So that's why we're here in front of you, and basically the current structure no longer meets the needs of our growing community. Essentially, the roles and responsibilities exceed the abilities and capabilities of a singular person. Our 17-year tenure treasure collector clerk has done yeoman work and should be fitted for a cape, but the time has come to split that office. So we appreciate your consideration towards this legislation.
Madam Vice Chairman, this is Carl Steinhardt, the town administrator. I've been here for almost 35 years, and I can see over the course of time with changes in law and regulations and the new challenges that town clerks are facing, as well as other laws that are put in place that, you know, the situation is just too much for one individual to address, especially when they have to be pocket training all the time to keep all the core certifications. So this makes sense to do this from a best management practices point of view. Any outside financial organization looking at this, like a Department of Revenue entity or an outside auditor, would recommend these types of measures that we're going to undertake. So that's why we need your support in undertaking this Modernization Act for the improvement of these operations. Want to say anything?
Yes. Good, it's good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For the last 17 years, I have been the treasure collector and town clerk for the town of Southwick. I have been past president for the Treasure Collectors Association and have been on the board of the association for the town clerks. I am pretty confident that this is the last town of Massachusetts that has this unique combination. During COVID, a lot of the election laws have changed, making it pretty cumbersome to have this combination to continue going forward. I am in support of separating them. I ask that you do consider separating them as quickly as we possibly can. I am leaving the position pretty quickly soon, so having this expedited would be very much appreciative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And is there anyone else on your panel that had wanted to testify?
There's no one here in the room with us at Southwick Town Hall. I was not sure whether or not Senator Mark or Representative Boldiga would be weighing in, but they certainly have helped facilitate this legislation going before your committee and being assigned a House number. So, you know, I think this is just a straightforward business decision.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the testimony. Are there any questions from any of the committee members in the room? Seeing no questions, I'll thank you again for your testimony. I will say I know that Representative Boldigan and Senator Mark have reached out about the legislation, and I'm sure they will be in continued communication with us to help move the bill forward. Thank you for testifying today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
All right. Yes, so we're going to move to H2104, and Benjamin Fiero, who I believe is present with
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the committee. Let me begin by introducing myself. My name is Benjamin Fiero. I'm an attorney and lobbyist here in Boston. My firm is Lynch &amp; Fiero, and I have been representing clients before the legislature for, believe it or not, 40 years. And I have specifically been representing the Home Builders and Remodelers Association for the past 25 years. Let me also say that housing is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. I am the vice chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals in my town of Ipswich, where I've served for over 18 years, past chair of the Master Plan Commission, and a member of the zoning subcommittee of the Planning Board. I'm here to testify in opposition to House Bill 2104. And this legislation, interestingly, has to do with Chapter 40B. And I begin by wondering why this legislation is actually before this committee, because Chapter 40B, which is the Affordable Housing Law, the Comprehensive Permit Law, enacted in 1969 as actually a civil rights law, is really within the jurisdiction of the Joint Committee on Housing. I testified earlier this year on a number of bills on 40B before that committee, and there's a dozen or more that are yet to be heard. Fundamentally, our issue with this legislation is that, in our view, it would weaken the effectiveness of Chapter 40B to build affordable housing, and actually all housing. And by the way, this is both rental housing and for-sale housing. Again, in my personal capacity as a volunteer in Ipswich, we have had many 40B projects. One of the most recent, actually, is an over-55 development, something that we actually very much need in Ipswich. We need to free up these large homes, like the one I used to live in with my two kids until I became an empty nester, my wife and I, and looking to stay in the community. This 40B project would not have been possible if it was subject to the local wetlands bylaw. I know I only have a minute left, so let me just speak quickly. Under Chapter 40B, if the community has not met its goal of 10% affordable housing, year-round affordable housing, it is subject to the law, which means that an applicant can come forward, and if they're going to do a project which will set aside 20 or 25% of the units as affordable, it files a single comprehensive permit with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoning Board of Appeals has the authority to grant all of the permits, so that it's one-stop shopping. But that means that it also has the authority to grant waivers, and waivers from local zoning, Title V, which is septic system, and of course, local wetlands regulations. And it is for zoning that usually is the waiver sought, right? Because so many communities, frankly, don't even allow for apartments in its zoning. So that's how you come under that. But both Title V, which is wetlands and, excuse me, septic systems and local wetlands regulations can also serve as a barrier to housing. Let me make clear, any project, and I know my time is up, I'll just wrap up with this statement. Any 40B project is subject still to the state wetlands regulations, the state Board of Health regulations, Title V, the state building code, fire codes, and so on. It is the waiver from local regulations that is essential in these matters. I'll stop there. Thank you for your attention, and I know we have some new members of the committee, and I look forward to working with you on housing issues if you have an interest in that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any committee members? Yes?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Can you clarify to me, so what happens if red curling right now under laws, if a project doesn't, or isn't compliant with local?
So let me give you an example. I mentioned this over-55 development in my town of Ipswich. This project would not have been able to be built at all if it did not receive a waiver from the local wetlands regulations. Why is that? Because many communities adopt buffer zones, that is, 100 feet beyond the bordering vegetated wetland, where in many instances, you cannot do anything. Couldn't put up a shed, you can't put a sidewalk, whatever. Many communities also adopt buffer zones. So a 50-foot no-disturb zone, from 50 feet from the edge of the buffer, you cannot disturb the land. A 65-foot no-build zone. Under the state wetlands regulations and DEP, DEP recognizes, recognizes in that, they acknowledge that communities adopt these local regulations. But under the state wetlands regulations, you can still build, of course, never in the wetlands, but you can still build or disturb if necessary, as long as you take certain mitigation steps, prevention of, you know, erosion, control, pollution, and so on. So that these projects, again, if they're subject to the local reg, can't be built. The waiver from the local regulations makes that possible. Again, please remember, you can never build in a wetland. And I would also add that, and I've talked to the administration about this, I hope they can consider this in their upcoming housing and housing bond legislation. As you know, land use decisions in Massachusetts, and we're quite unique, are made by volunteers, local volunteer boards. I serve on my board. Now, I'm an attorney who knows something about zoning. We have had, over the almost 19 years, many interested volunteers who have gotten on who don't know anything about zoning. Same is true for conservation commissions and boards of health. Interested, well-meaning individuals, citizens who are willing to give their time but bring no knowledge or expertise. Where I'm going with that is that local conservation commissions may adopt their own regulations that exceed the standards promulgated by DEP in their regulations. But please keep in mind that a local conservation commission does not have to provide any substantive justification. They do not have to provide any scientific evidence or other evidence that these regulations that go beyond Title V, I keep saying Title V, my apology, go beyond the wetlands regulations are actually environmentally or scientifically justified. Candidly, as we know with zoning, in some instances, communities use both zoning and non-zoning regulations, frankly, as exclusionary housing measures, and that's what we're getting at. I hope that's helpful.
Any other questions?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. All right, I think we're going to be switching back to virtual testimony now and moving to H2107. Do we have Ryan Earl available?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Again, my name is Ryan Earl, Senior Government Affairs Specialist at Eversource. Thank you, Chair Olivera and Vice Chair Sabadosa, for the opportunity to testify today in support of H2110 and H2107. Eversource views this as an opportunity to facilitate and streamline energy efficiency and decarbonization projects. In order to meet the Commonwealth's climate goals, Eversource and our partner Mass Save Program administrators work with customers and vendor networks across the state to make energy upgrades and improvements to buildings, including single-family, multifamily, income-qualified housing, as well as commercial buildings. These improvements can include weatherization upgrades, such as insulation and air sealing, electrification of HVAC systems, and associated barrier remediation for health and safety, such as ventilation and knob-and-tube wiring remediations. As we continue striving towards our climate goals while making improvements that benefit our customers, both owners and renters, it is important that these projects move forward without undue delay in permitting. These bills will ensure that municipalities review and issue permits for important energy improvements, regardless of lien constraints that may be associated with the building. Energy efficiency permits should be issued for these properties, notwithstanding any outstanding liens, because the improvements will tend to save occupants money, leaving more to pay off any past due dollars. In cases where energy efficiency-related permits are delayed or denied on account of liens, renters lose out on the comfort and savings benefits that energy efficiency measures have to offer. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? All right, seeing none, thank you again. We're going to continue on the same piece of legislation, and I was wondering if Stephen Smalley was available virtually.
Yes, I am Vice Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Sabadosa and the committee. Thanks a lot on me to testify today in support of H2107, as well as H2110, an act to facilitate the issuance of local permits for building energy efficiency and decarbonization. I am Stephen Smalley, and I am the Government Affairs Manager for National Grid. First of all, I want to thank Rep. Roy and Rep. Ryan for filing these bills. These bills would prohibit municipalities from denying permits needed for energy efficiency work to renters whose landlords have a tax lien on the property. The Mass Save Program administrators and their partners in the home contracting industry and low-income advocacy community regularly see good projects, often for the benefit of low-income and moderate-income customers delayed or blocked entirely due to the local permitting hurdles. This legislation would add permits needed for energy efficiency and building decarbonization activities to the already-established exempt list of local permits and make significant impacts in leveling the playing field for access to important programs. One example of a program that would benefit from this law change would be the Weatherization Assistance Program, or the WAP. It provides energy efficiency services to low-income residents, and with the passage of this bill, tenants who often are at least able to afford the burden of high energy costs due to poor weatherization would not be excluded from the program by absentee property owners who owe taxes. The WAP provides tangible benefits to low-income renters, would be helped by this bill by reducing energy costs, improve indoor comfort and air quality, enhancing the overall quality of life for their housing. H2107 and H2110 can help the Commonwealth achieve its energy efficiency and climate emission goals without leaving behind its most vulnerable residents. I heard the favorable passage of both of these and happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the panel? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. We are going to move to Charles Harrock, also on the same bill, H2107.
Hi, can I make sure you can hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Charles Harrock. I'm a senior attorney at the National Consumer Law Center here in Boston. I am testifying in support of H2107 and an identical bill, H2110, on behalf of the Massachusetts Energy Directors Association, or MEDA, and the Low Income Energy Affordability Network, or LEAN. MEDA is the Association of the Local Nonprofit Agencies that deliver the state's fuel assistance program in each of the Commonwealth cities and towns, and LEAN is the Organization of Community Action Agencies that lead the Low Income Weatherization Program. Chairman Roy's H2107 and Chairman Ryan's H2110 each seek to address a barrier to the Commonwealth meeting its energy efficiency and decarbonization goals, as the very bill title makes clear, quote, "an act to facilitate the issuance of local permits for building energy efficiency and decarbonization," end quote. Currently, some cities and towns in the Commonwealth refuse to grant permits to nonprofit agencies seeking to deliver energy efficiency and electrification measures to low-income housing if there are any unpaid local taxes or fees. The reasoning appears to be that a property owner who is behind on any local taxes or fees should not be allowed to pull a permit without first clearing the debt. This makes sense if the owner seeks a permit, for example, to add on a new garage, since it appears the owner has funds available to pay the back taxes. However, this policy makes little sense in the situations that MEDA and LEAN frequently encounter. Permit denials for weatherization of low-income multifamily homes, these permit denials penalize low-income tenants, not the property owners, because it's the low-income tenants who are thus denied the benefit of lower energy bills. Moreover, these permit denials ente the Commonwealth from achieving its energy efficiency goals. For several years now, the Department of Energy Resources has consistently identified the multifamily sector, which disproportionately houses low- and moderate-income households, as an area where we are simply not reaching enough buildings through the Mass Save Program. Low- and moderate-income households are among the Commonwealth's highest priorities for receiving energy efficiency and decarbonization services. H2107 and H2110 make it clear that cities and towns should not deny permits for projects that move Massachusetts' energy policy forward. These bills do that by making sure building permits will be granted that are, quote, "necessary to implement energy efficiency and building decarbonization measures authorized by the Green Communities Act." I thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Vice Chair Sabadosa, for relieving me for a little bit. Are there any questions for my committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have virtually Gina Granberry, who is a resident of Lynn, testifying on House Bill 2036. Gina, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Terrific. The floor is yours.
All righty. Let me get my notes. Okay. Again, my name is Gina. I'm from Lynn, and, oh, excuse me, and thank you for, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify again on another bill that would prevent foreclosure theft by predatory or pretend lenders. I am in support of H2036, an act enabling municipal pre-foreclosure mediation. I would like to thank my representative, Pete Capana, for sponsoring this bill, something he supported in pass when he was a council in Lynn, along with Rep. Dan Cahill. Unfortunately, we no longer have mediation in place. The statewide mediation, I'm sorry, the statewide mediation would not only prevent unnecessary foreclosures, keep people in their homes, would also expose the actual credit of a purported loan held by a security. loan held by a secured ties trust. And I ask for a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Are there any questions by committee members for Gina? Seeing that there are none, thank you, Gina, for testifying.
Thank you.
We're now going to move on to some panelists that are on right now. There are four panels that have signed up to testify. The first panel who I see is on includes members of the Massachusetts Alliance Against Predatory Lending. The first panel, and they're testifying all on House Bill two zero three six, an act enabling municipal pre-foreclosure mediation. We have Gary Yard on. Gary, are you on?
Hi, yes.
Hi, Gary. And who signed up to testify with you as well on the panel are Carrot Young and Ken Gilchrist. Are you on as well? I see that they're on, but why don't we start with you, Gary, for three minutes to discuss the bill you're testifying in support of?
Just wanted to just make sure that the topic, I don't know if it's my or your side. My name is Gary Yard. I live, I bought a house in ninety-five. Went to get a mortgage, I promised that I'd close it. I found that agreements fit in two parts of the mortgage. And it was passed the agenda to a loan that was split, a strategy to turn out. I'm sorry. Under the rights, loan illegally more than property is worth, yes, gave to regulators because the computers are really, have a way to connect the loans to give the same loan to the same person on the same day. Instead, it confirmed with, the whole loan package or not. I quickly found that I was more than afford. They acted like they were me a bit because they had, they had enough money for the first loan to pay it off. But now it was a overpriced loan. Watching that, what happened to other people, that has stayed through, and I happened on the second. Maybe it would be the, just have on the second. Ultimately, I tried to get more, more education and refinance. The name never existed. It was never, it never existed either. But that's a nice call. The loan modification process determined the English language, English and American language.
How you doing?
But nobody ever told me on the financial impact of the loan, the arithmetic of the origination, qualification. Whenever I never got paper, I never got review details, and I never had property disclosure to me. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for your testimony. Are any other members of the panel that you signed up to testify that I mentioned? Carrot Young, Ken Gilchrist, are you on? Seeing that they're not on at this moment, are there any members that have any questions for Gary Yard? Seeing that there are none, thank you, thank you, sir, for your testimony. The second panel that has signed up, I'll just ask if they're on. Jay Lively and Alanise Umana. I don't think they're on. We'll circle back.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Okay, sorry about that.
I just am kind of getting set up. Would it be possible to come back to me in a minute?
Absolutely. Take your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to do the rest of the other panelists who have signed up on this bill, and we'll circle back to you.
Thank you, sir.
On our third panel, we have Grace Ross and Alton King. Grace, Alton, are you on?
Yes, for Alton King. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Alton. Grace, are you on as well? I don't think she's on yet, so Alton, why don't you begin your testimony? You have three minutes.
Well, thank you, Chairman, and members of the committee. I am reporting on H two zero three six. Thank you for hearing me. I live in Long Meadow, Massachusetts. We need mediators for loan modifications to avoid foreclosure. When I got two mortgages underwritten together in two thousand and six, I was told that the appraised value of my home was one point five million dollars. The second mortgage, which I was going to put on because of an addition, was going to be for four hundred and ten thousand dollars. I was absolutely promised that when the renovations were done, they would be rolled into one single affordable mortgage. But when the renovations were done, suddenly they could not find an appraisal above one point two five million. So that meant that the four hundred and ten thousand dollars that I put into the home reduced the value of my home two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What we can tell now from municipal assessments is that the original appraisal was not legally, was not legal. As a matter of fact, it was a part of a lie of this historic baseless inflationary housing bubble. They had the municipal assessment, but the answers to having lied about the real property value was to say no and deny me the promised loan modification. I was stuck with a debt that they knew could not possibly be paid. We now know that all of the inflated and baseless values have been in one mortgage. It would have been unwriteable. The Office of Controllers of Currency, responsible for supervising banks, said a mortgage could not be up to ninety-seven, up to at most ninety-seven percent of the asset value. Our Long Meadow study at the height of the housing bubble in two thousand and five, two thousand and six shows that they were split into a single underwriting mortgage into two, like in my case, to avoid being caught in overpricing the property illegally, prohibitively, and endangering their own existence as a lender. Light of day mediation would have saved well over a hundred thousand foreclosures in Massachusetts so far. I'm quite sure of that. That's my concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Alton, for your testimony. And before we entertain any questions that committee members might have, I believe Grace Ross has joined us as well. Grace, are you on? I think you might be muted, Grace.
She might be muted, and I think that Karen Merritt was muted at the time and wasn't able to get on.
Okay, we have a couple other folks that are going to be joining us shortly for the last panel, including Karen. So I'll start first with Grace and you, Alton. And Grace, can you unmute or having a little trouble with it? Is there any way that IT can possibly unmute them? Grace, if you look at your screen, if you're not, if you're on a laptop, there should be an unmute button at the top. So near the camera button, there should be a mute, an unmute button. Victory.
Sorry, it's a whole new system to me. Sorry about that.
Not a problem, Grace. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So we've been, I think you're aware, trying to get pre-foreclosure mediation for, well, I think before the market crashed on all of the predatory loans in two thousand and eight. And what has been shown, Connecticut had it the first state, and they were running at an eighty-five percent success rate. And we know that the originations now, I think you've heard from a few people, were overpriced. They split the mortgages to avoid regulatory oversight. The, this prescient legislature of ours had in two thousand and four passed the Predatory Home Loan Practices Act to avoid exactly all of these practices. And that law only finally got to the SJC and got affirmed last summer, thanks to two Brockton African-American homeowners who got heard. We need pre-foreclosure mediation. If we can get it through the municipalities where, which have been hardest hit, those would be the folks most likely to pass it. And pre-foreclosure mediation where it's been used, if mediators are trained to know what to look for in terms of originations, our people would be prepared to come in, show that the municipal values showed that the loans were overpriced, unaffordable, and meant to trap people. The studies show that if it's overpriced and unaffordable, then people would normally sell out from under a loan they couldn't afford. But they don't have the information to show that it's overpriced. They didn't know how to do it, but we know how to do it now. Those municipal appraisals, actually, the Office of Controller of the Currency has told banks that they are to use municipal assessments to assess whether their appraisers are being pressured to overprice the properties so that people then get unaffordable, overpriced loans. So we now know how it was done, and if we could get mediators in early so that the practices that are leading up to illegal foreclosures are moderated by informed mediators who can ensure that those practices are not allowed to go forward, then we would be in a position, finally, to rein in a bunch of what's going on. It would give some light of day that because we have non-judicial foreclosure in Massachusetts we don't have. So this is a huge way to finally get some justice here. And our laws hold, including the Predatory Home Loan Practices Act, that if a mortgage is unconscionable and unenforceable the way it was originally written, it is supposed to get modified because if it doesn't, then in fact the banks don't even have a right to collect on it. So this is to everybody's benefit. It would, it would reset the housing market, find, let people some justice, and hopefully stop the still spiraling number of foreclosures that are returning post-COVID.
Thank you, Grace. Are there any questions for Grace or Alton, my committee members? Seeing none, thank you, Grace. Thank you, Alton, for your testimony. I'm going to circle back now to Jay Lively, who is just getting settled in. Jay, are you still there? Hi, Jay. The floor is yours for three minutes.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me to speak. In two thousand, in January of two thousand and six, I signed what I was told were two legal mortgages for the purchase of my first home. It was another, never explained to me why two mortgages were needed nor why murs appeared in these documents. The first Murray mortgage was for three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and the second mortgage was for around eighty thousand dollars. The second mortgage had an adjustable arm, which was set to increase within a three-year period. And at the time, the town had assessed the property at three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The mortgage company advised me that I could refinance in the future to get a more traditional single mortgage and a fixed rate. Eight months later, in October of two thousand and six, I signed a mortgage with Fremont in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, not realizing the principal was already overpriced and unaffordable. I was not aware of the Fremont decision in two thousand and eight, nor the prevalence of predatory lending that was occurring at the time. It never occurred to me that the mortgage was overpriced, illegal, and doomed to fail. The underlying stress and financial strain was the proximate cause of the failure of my marriage, business, health, and even ability to walk. I did obtain a modification in two thousand and eleven, which lowered my interest rate, but did not bring my loan into compliance with the Fremont decision. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty, I had multiple surgeries, enrolled in alcohol treatment, and was on twenty different medications for pain, depression, anxiety, sleep, swelling, et cetera. These medications' side effects include memory loss, lethargy, weight gain, and sleep disturbances. At one point, I was over seventy pounds overweight and taking medication at very high doses. In two thousand and twenty, I got notices served at my, notices were served but not at my primary residence, that my house is to be auctioned. I would, I would later learn that the reported auction of my property was done by a non-legal entity that had no standing on my case in Massachusetts or anywhere else in the country. And in two thousand and seventeen, they, they offered a mortgage modification that would reduce the principal, and I signed that, returned it to them, and then they didn't honor it. It's clear that some oversight is required to make sure that these companies are not, are following the law, and so I support H two zero three six so that this may not happen to others.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for telling your personal story. Are there any questions from committee members? Hearing none, thank you for your testimony. Moving on to the final panel that we have signed up, we have Adidra Dun, signed up, a Tom Suchudoski, sorry, I'm butchering your last name, and a Karen Merritt. Tom and Karen, are you on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. The floor is yours, Karen, for three minutes.
Okay. Good day to the chairs and members of the committee. I thank you in advance for hearing my brief story. Again, my name is Karen Merritt. I was in trouble financially in two thousand and ten, as were many of us. It was called the Great Recession. My accountant came, my long-term accountant came to me and said, Karen, I'm going to help you. I wasn't working. I was a stay-at-home mom. I owned two properties. I had over half a million dollars in equity. He induced me to sign what I now know is called a hard-money loan because I didn't work. He refinanced my two properties to his brother-in-law, and he used the collateral as the payback, as, as the security. I didn't know any of this. I just believed in my accountant. Ten thousand dollar check went to him. I thought all was well. I had received no, you know, no disclosures. This is my fiduciary. This is my person. Years went by, I'm thinking all is well. Two thousand and eighteen, I get a letter from an attorney. I over, I owe about a million dollars. I was devastated, both of my properties. I'm a senior citizen. This is my, this is, this is my, my peace of mind. This is, this is everything that I've worked for my entire life, my children's inheritance. I was devastated, to say the least. Then to top it off, secretly through those years, they compounded the interest that he had illegally given, that loan, that hard-money loan. He had compounded it, compounded, compounded. It reached fifty-four percent interest. It reached 54% interest. That's what they used to foreclose on my home, a 54% interest rate. Mortgages are supposed to be simple interest. Our cap in Massachusetts is 20% interest unless you contact the Attorney General. Obviously, that was not done. They foreclosed on me without the legal notices that are required, to say the least. If they had been forced in a municipal mediation program to talk to me, I would not have three court cases trying to get enforcement of the predatory, illegal nature of the so-called loan and the so-called foreclosure. They must have to at least sit at the negotiating table with an expert mediator who knows how to read these documents and how to help us understand them. If it reveals criminal action like in my case, clearly in my 54% interest rate, I would have found out before the foreclosure, could have fought it. And somewhere, some judge is going to care about criminal usury if I had had the opportunity to showcase this, but I didn't. We really need, we need overseeing of these documents. Because mistakes happen, there's criminal activity, and here I sit, our system has not picked me up. I've lost my home on a 54% interest rate. It's outrageous. Thank you for listening, and good day.
Thank you, Karen, for sharing your story. Is Tom on as well?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Tom. Before we turn it over for questions for you and Karen, you have three minutes to testify.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you to the chairs and the members of the committee. My name is Tom Suchudowski. Like Karen, I'm 65-plus years old. I am from Amherst, Massachusetts, and I am testifying in support of H2036. I have been dealing with two overpriced, unaffordable loans on two separate properties. On my home, the loan-to-value ratio when the mortgage was presumably offered to me, the loan-to-value ratio was 135%, which is 40% over the legal limit of 95%. So I started with the principal, which was significantly higher than it should have been. In both cases, I have applied for loan modifications, and we actually would have to put and live through it, put yourself in our shoes and live through it to understand how emotionally draining the process is and how lengthy it is. In some cases, it took up to three years. And there were no negotiations, no process for figuring out what the terms of the loan modifications should actually be. On one occasion, I attempted to negotiate the terms of loan mod, and the servicer did not respond. They allowed the letter of loan modification to expire, and I had to reapply again, again going through the lengthy, emotionally draining process. Now I know that both mortgages were predatory, illegal, with overpriced origination principles, and I have been stuck and unable to get out from under from day one since those mortgages were given to me. I also now know that a contract, a mortgage contract, is not legal as originally written, and before the loan is modified, they actually have to make the contract legal. Instead, we ended up in sort of a take-it-or-leave-it position. You know, good luck next time if you get a chance to reapply. The loan mode they gave me had a balloon payment at the end, so essentially, in order to make it work and lower my payment somewhat, I have been paying an overpriced rent to whoever claims to own my loan. And at the end, with the half a million dollar balloon payment, I am not going to be able to afford that. So this is sort of a recipe for disaster, is a ticking time bomb. Even crazier, the party that I supposedly signed the mortgage with or end the loan modification with announced three years later that they were going to apply for the mortgage assignment. So when I signed the loan modification, they didn't have the right to my mortgage. So I was kind of duped into signing a loan modification that the party that I was signing with, that I believed I was signing with, the rightful party, didn't even own my mortgage at the time. So a trained, presumably a trained mediator would be able to realize what's legal and what's illegal in the process and would clean up the loan modification process early on. And the real lender would have to maybe write down the principal and give us the terms that we would be able to afford. Thank you for listening and have a great day.
Thank you, Tom. And is there a Adidra on as well who signed up to testify with this panel? I don't think so. So Tom and Karen, if you're still on, are there any members of the committee that have any questions for Tom or Karen? Seeing that there are none, thank you both for your testimony. I don't see any other members who have signed up to testify today or members of the public who have signed up to testify. Just a reminder for those who might not be able to sign on or couldn't make it today that written testimony will be accepted by the committee until Tuesday, October 24, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. Please email the testimony to municipalesecommittee@gmail.com. I'm going to read in the bill.
I just have, Ken Gilchrist is on.
Excuse me.
Ken Gilchrist is on.
Excuse me. Who's this? We couldn't hear you.
My name is Lori Ansley. Ken Gilchrist is on.
Ken, Ken is on.
Gilchrist.
Ken, are you on and are able to testify? We don't hear Ken on right now, so I would suggest that if Ken, if you wish to testify and you're not able to unmute right now, that you email testimony to the committee by next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. All right. I'm going to read in the rest of the bills that were not heard today or we did not see testimony. House Bill 2060, an act authorizing cities and towns to establish reduced maximum tow rates during certain declared emergencies. H2061, an act relative to permitting the construction of accessory dwelling units. House Bill 2066, an act encouraging public-private partnerships to create affordable housing at public sites. House Bill 2077, an act relative to veteran housing advantage. House Bill 2106, an act to promote parking and pedestrian safety. House Bill H2107, H2110, both acts to facilitate the issuance of local permits for building energy-efficient decarbonization. House Bill 2116, an act relative to the maintenance of private roads, beaches, and amenities in municipalities. House Bill 2119, an act relative to parking permit fees. House Bill 4042, an act facilitating the appropriation expenditure of community preservation funds for community housing purposes in the town of Wellesley. House 4046, an act authorizing the town of Nantucket to convey a certain parcel of land situated in the town of Nantucket, held for park purposes to the Nantucket Conservation Foundation Incorporated for open space recreational and conservation purposes. House Bill 4056, an act establishing the appointed office of town clerk in the town of Bolton. House 4075, an act relative to changing the term of the elected office of moderator for the town of Stonem. House Bill 4077, an act authorizing the town of Nantucket to convey certain land situated in the town of Nantucket, held for open space, recreation, conservation purposes to the Nantucket Island Land Bank for the purposes pursuant to this legislation. Senate Bill 1278, an act to generate revenue to expand transit options. Senate Bill 1318, an act to improve parking pedestrian safety. Senate Bill 2435, an act authorizing the city known as the town of Barnstable to change the use of a portion of land within Mother's Park. Senate Bill 2436, an act amending Nantucket Sewer Act. Senate Bill 2438, an act amending the charter of the town of Nantucket. Those are all the bills that we have before the committee hearing. Before we adjourn today, I want to express my deepest gratitude for my friend and colleague from Western Massachusetts, the vice chair of this committee, Representative Sabodosa, for stepping into the chair's role for a little bit, and also to the staff of both the committee, Haley, Jeff, Sumaya, to our court officers, and to our team at LIS. Thank you for doing your job to make sure this committee runs smoothly. That concludes the hearing for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Senator Kennedy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I, all those opposed, thank you. The committee on municipalities hearing conclude for today. Thank you.